Oh, but I heard it's a mess. What happened? I mean, there's holes. Take that back. Shut my mouth.
That's good. That's better.
Well, that goes all day long. One person gets it. Then next time they're like, well, we got.
We get presents.
One of the Christmas parties.
That's always fun.
You guys give us a date.
I'll dress up again.
We've got to put it on the calendar.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Special to that parent advisory. We need a date for the Christmas present.
You know what else is up?
All right. Who knows how to say your pledge of allegiance? Would you all stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance? Our students, we need us. The flag is over there beyond the palm tree. Ready? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a reminder, this is a meeting of the Lemmonster School Committee. If you're watching this a week from now, the meeting's being filmed. It is Tuesday, September the 2nd, not Monday, but Tuesday. And we are here at the Apple Seeds Restaurant, and we have guests tonight. Go ahead. We're going to turn the media. Yeah, we'll do delayed opening for public forum. We could do that. All right. The floor is yours.
Today is grade four. These guys are at Northwest and Fallbrook. And this is their teacher, Ms. Flaherty, and she's going to introduce them and do their thing.
I'm Kathryn Flaherty, and I'm so proud to be here with my summer enrichment academy students. There's four out of the 10 here. People have very busy lives. So they have soccer and some sicknesses and things like that. So we're going to go with what we have. And so let me just ask them to introduce themselves. Step on up and say it in summer.
My name is Santino and my favorite insect is ants.
Just say what school you're from. Yes. He's into character already.
I'm Santino and I'm from Fallbrook.
My name is Bryson. I'm from Fallbrook.
This is Miguel. I'm for Northwest.
My name is Lumilla and I am for Northwest.
Thank you to Renee Coska, Kelly Nelson, and my amazing parent, Joe Pickett, for all the support during summer school. This summer, I decided to have the students write a script and perform a play using the summer enrichment theme of camping. Our play was about a group of kids at a sleep awake camp. In writing this script, we were able to study character traits and development, story elements like characters, setting, and plot, and the features of a drama. Students first decided what kind of character they would like to be and what traits they would display in the play. Then they got into groups to discuss the kind of problems the characters would encounter. The girls decided they would have the problem of getting locked in their tent. The boys agreed with to have a snake in their tent, and both groups decided that their food would go missing. As a group, we then decided that the overarching problem would be their lack of teamwork. I used the ideas to type an outline of the play, and then the students decided what they wanted to say in the parts of the play. We rehearsed and rehearsed and then presented to the first grade students at the end of week four of the summer program. It was a big success. We'd like to share a few abbreviated scenes from our play tonight. We may be a little rusty and we're missing some characters, but please remember that this was written by the students for the students. And we're not going to move around and act it out, but please visualize on the Fallbrook stage, two tents, a campfire, two coolers, and all kinds of signs that showed where we were.
And a snake.
Camp Awesome.
And a snake.
And a snake, which was part of the props. Yes. I'm so very proud of these students and excited to present to you Camp Awesome. Scene one. This play takes place at Camp Awesome. It's Sunday afternoon and the campers are arriving one by one. Hello, campers. I'm Mrs. Flaherty. Welcome to our wonderful Camp Awesome. Please think about what you like and tell me your name when you get checked in. Hi, what's your name? And what's your name? Awesome. An athlete. Okay. And what's your name? Good. And what's your name, honey?
My name is.
Oh, yes. We like to keep our camp nice and tidy. Oh. All right. Now that we have you all checked in, let's, let me teach you our cheer. It goes like this. Camp A W E S O M E. Awesome, awesome, totally. Do it with me. Camp A W E S O M E. Awesome, awesome, totally. Okay. Now you're going to go set up your camps. Remember, follow the directions. Set it up carefully. Here's a joke. Why are campers so serious? Because they're intense. Now go have fun and work together. Scene two.
And that's.
Scene two. Introduce the bottom of the back of the camp. And they are setting up their tents.
Scene three.
In scene three, the girls are still having problems, having trouble. They get stuck in their tent and they are not with a good solution.
Scene four.
Scene four shows that the boys are having. With the snake in the tent. They are finding that they are arguing more and blaming each other rather than working together.
Scene five.
It's close to. Setting up the camp and school there. Look at that. I know my, I may be worse together with this whole problem. Before we develop what's our thing.
Scene six. Where did the food go? The campers have just gotten back from their long hike and they're looking for their food.
What do you have in mind? Old fashioned people. It's not me, I'm looking for bears, not bears.
Um, going on the cooler hunt.
Like the fire in the hut.
Like the fire in the hut.
The move to the left.
The move to the right.
Oh, oh, there's a river. The streams, streams of water.
And roll over. And roll over. Roll through.
Melonie said, we just gone in one big circle. We're back at Camp Awesome. Let's do it here. Camp A W E. No.
And we still haven't found our food. That means they're.
Guilford says bears are very strong animals. He says, you know what they call a bear who likes coolers? A bowler bear.
That's going to start me.
Aaron says, me too. All the campus people for the cabin, open the door and sneak inside. Mrs. Flaherty's sleeping and they work together quietly to take the coolers out of the cabin. Mrs. Flaherty wakes up and sees that her plan worked. Scene seven, rise and shine. The campers all slept well after a long cooler hunt and a late night dinner. Mrs. Flaherty rings the bell to wake them up. Dingalingalingalingaling. Guys, child campers, are you ready for day two at camp? Today, we have to put the swimming docks out for our afternoon swim lessons. Who is ready to work together?
We are.
Wow, that's quite a change of heart.
Yes, and it makes us really afraid of those.
And A W E S O M E. Teamwork, teamwork, totally.
Great job.
Very nice job.
Did you forget that he likes the fish? Did you forget that he likes the fish? He could have caught you all the fish you needed. Just dangle the snake and. Nice job.
Thank you, guys.
Good job.
We'll have a short music video with Mr. Doctor, who did music for the both schools. So he's just going to show you about a 34 minute, I mean 35. 35 second show.
It's not that I can't sit for 34 minutes. It's just I can't sit for 34 minutes. Kiss that song.
It was All Star.
Yeah, no, no. All Star. All right. We have been entertained and did a good job. They had a busy summer, and that's a good thing. All right. We'll now open up for public comment. If there was anyone that would like to address the school committee, just their name for the record, please. Is there anyone that in the audience or might be watching from home? Or from a desert in Arizona with no cell reception? Anyone like to address the committee? One time? One more time? Oh, see, they're calling in. Calling in from Cleveland. Fucking traffic. All right. If not, we'll close this portion of the meeting. Thank you. And now we'll move on to communications superintendent.
No communications.
Student report. Look at.
We've got students.
We've got students.
Hello.
Okay.
So my name is Valan Patel, and I'm the new Lemmonster High School School Committee representative. So school has started, and we're going to start the school year off strong. So many students have decided to, many dual enrollment classes and AP classes challenging themselves. And many freshmen don't know where their classes are and stuff. And lunches are getting pretty packed, I'd say. Lines are pretty long, but at least the lunch is still free. And with these hard classes and a lot of classes, this new cellphone rule is being placed where at the beginning of every class, students have to put their cellphone in a pouch. So you can't use it at all, even when you go to the bathroom. Only time you get to use it is in the halls or at lunch. So this new rule has its pros and cons, but I personally think it's a pretty good rule. More students are being engaged and many students aren't being distracted, which is an overall plus, I'd say. We have senior sunrise coming up on this Friday, 5:30 in the morning at Sholen Farms. We hope to wear our senior shirts and represent our spirits and watch the sunrise together. Clubs, there'll be a club fair held by Stump on September 17th during the school day, so students can join and find out what clubs are being offered at the school. The school store will open on September 8th, selling class shirts and other LHS merch. There's an early dismissal day on September 17th where students will be dismissed at 10:45. And we have open house on September 25th, 2025. The LHS Theater Company is doing tryouts for the Fall Musical, The Wizard of Oz, next Tuesday after school. We have fall sports, and they're up and running. The first home football game is this Friday, and the marching band will debut their new halftime show at the game. We also have Homecoming, the 13th, with a dance. That is all.
Can I give up my phone first thing in the morning? And pick it up at night? Do you mind taking it and locking it up somewhere? Maybe, he says. I voluntarily give mine up. Did you say 5:30 in the morning at Sholen? Okay.
My name is Hersch Patel, the School Committee representative for the CTI. So in CTI, there are eight total students out on co-op, which are all juniors continuing employment into their senior year. There's a new sign in front of the CTI, which I'm sure can be seen from here, allowing messages to be displayed to students, staff, and parents. Four new instructors were added for the school year. Ms. Karian Health Assisting, Mr. Powell in HVAC, Mr. Miss in Auto Tech, and Mr. Frescos in Business Tech. And there's also a new CTI Guidance Counselor, Ms. Kayla Benoit. And finally, oh, sorry. The culinary program has a new brick oven style pizza oven in the kitchen. This state of the art oven will be able to fully cook a pizza in three minutes or less. And finally, this year will be the first year that the CTI Business Technology Program has seniors, which will be the first graduates of the program.
Well. Y'all have a busy September. Don't mess around. Oh, good. Well, thank you for both for joining us. And let us know kind of what's happening. Sounds like you're off to good start.
Welcome.
Can we get him some name tags this year? You know, tell, talk to the business department, who can talk to the 3D printing department, who can then talk to production.
We know. We know someone.
And a scheduler. All right. Thank you. Now we'll move on to superintendent's report. Superintendent.
Thank you. So last Tuesday, our, we held our district-wide all-staff meeting at Lemmonster High School. We kicked it off with a performance from our choral department. Students sang several songs, and then it was followed by our band and cheerleaders, who really got the crowd excited to start a new school year. We also welcomed Sharaki Holly, Dr. Sharaki Holly, who was our guest speaker, who shared a lot of powerful insights around cultural responsive behaviors and teacher, teaching that we all experienced and will continue to experience through our professional development throughout the year. On Wednesday, August 27th, we welcome back our students in grades one through 12. Myself and all of the administrative team went out to all schools. We visited schools throughout the week. We offered any support or troubleshooting that we could provide. It was wonderful to see all of our staff settling in with their routines and classes were abuzz with learning from all of our new, our returning students and some of our new students. Today, we welcome kindergarten and preschoolers throughout the district, which is, you know, a significant milestone in young learners' lives and their families. It's exciting to see new students coming aboard at grades pre-K and K. We also, I was lucky enough to visit several schools today. One place that I visited, Francis Drake, opened some new portables, which is now our pre-K Lincoln program. And those classrooms were very well equipped for learning for our youngest students. That was exciting. There's a beautiful new playground there, as I mentioned last time. And so the kids and families were really excited to have this new space for learning. The other things that I want to mention is that busing is a work in progress. You know, today we added kindergarten students to our busing, so the, the routes are, it just takes some time to make sure that the bus drivers know all of our students and all of the stops. And so I think, you know, every day has gotten a little bit smoother. The times have reduced quite a bit. So if people can just be patient with waiting at bus stops. The new app, we asked everyone to download the new app. It's, it's very precise, and so it really helps families understand what time the bus is arriving at the stop. And so if families have not downloaded that new app, we encourage them to do that. As our student representatives mentioned, there is a bill in legislation, with our legislation right now around a bell-to-bell policy for no cellphone use that potentially might be implemented next year. So we felt like it was important to start a new practice this year so that students are prepared if that is to happen. At the high school, we purchased for all classrooms lock boxes so that students can lock up their cellphones when they arrive in class and then can unlock them when it's time to transition to a new class at our high school level. We, we are allowing the phones to be utilized during transition times and during lunch. At our middle schools, we have a bell-to-bell practice, so they are locked up as soon as the students arrive at school and they are unlocked at the end of the day. Again, that is potentially what the state will be moving to in the future for next school year, so we wanted to be proactive about our approach. We appreciate the support of families in these practices. I will say we are seeing more engaged students and less distractions during the educational times. And it is, there's a lot of research on it being best practice for students to be able to focus on class routines and the instructional times. So we're just hoping that everyone is supportive of this new practice at all of the school levels. Other than that, I want to thank everyone, our staff, the city departments, and the school committee for all the support that you've provided up to the start of the school year. We took on a lot of new things, and we needed a lot of support over the summer to make those things happen, like the portables at Francis Drake and the new playground and repairing different things throughout the, the district. And we greatly appreciate all of the support from everybody. And so we're off to a positive school year.
Nice. Can we, can we have the meeting at Francis Drake next month? Yeah. And then I think we asked last time for a list of the improvements that were made over the summer. You know, okay, good. Perfect. See, you're reading my mind without a cellphone. I got to say, guilty as charged. I'd be one of those students that if you let me have my cellphone, it probably would have been best. You're actually helping me to take it away, right? For a lot of students, you're just helping them from themselves because they can't. Right? And who's calling you at this particular point? It's not like you're a doctor and they're calling to find out, need a prescription for something. I mean, or your stock, the stock took a dip or something, right? I mean, it's, you know, you get it during, you get it during the classrooms, right? In between. And then at lunchtime. Oh, what else is there?
Can I also mention school supplies? We, we had principals purchase school supplies at the end of last year, so there's plenty of supplies for all students. If any families have any concerns around accessing school supplies, they can contact the school and talk to the principal. Okay.
Other questions for the superintendent? If not, nice job. Happy that, our phone didn't ring once. We're like, is it school? Should school open today? Yeah. Did you hear anything? Did you hear anything? Nope. Didn't hear one word. It's gotten better and better. I mean, it happens a lot with the buses, but any other thing is for students that have the app, don't come flying out of your door last second. You see them running down Mechanic Street chasing the bus because they had it timed perfectly. All right. Head out the door exactly eight, gets their eight old too, I'll get on the bus. It's off for a couple of seconds. Literally see them running down the street chasing the bus, but they do stop at every intersection down Mechanic and Water, so there's a good chance you'll catch up. So don't time it that close. All right. Thank you, Superintendent. And we did explain, Melissa and I were both there for the opening, but we explained that most everybody had another conflict or a job that they couldn't get out of, or you would have been there. So thank you. All right. Let's see. Readers Theater, did we just do that? Overview of the timeline for the strategic plan?
So as you know, we had a five-year strategic plan that sunsets this school year. And so we are in the process of developing a timeline for how we are going to develop our next five-year strategic plan. So Loreen Sapola is here to explain where we're at with this process.
Has it really been five years?
Every year goes by faster and faster.
Well, no more strategic plans then, because it goes by too quick.
Too fast, yes.
All right.
So here's my bulleted list of what's going to be taking place. As Superintendent Desmond mentioned, we're looking to do our planning this year. We're going to start in force in October. So Superintendent Desmond and I are working with some support people. We're getting the pieces in place through the month of September, gathering some data. The things that will take place first in early fall are what we're calling an organizational diagnostic. So there's going to be surveys that will be done. We will ask that you allow us at every meeting to remind people that what the survey links are, how important that they are. People certainly watch these sessions, and so we like to use you as a conduit to, to let our parents and the community know that we would like their information in the surveys. There will be interviews with each of the cabinet members, so that includes human resources, curriculum, accountability, special education, pupil services, business administration. And then there will be focus groups, and that's one of the things that we've found that can be done virtually. And we do seem to get a lot more people who are interested in taking part in virtual sessions because they don't have to get themselves somewhere. They can do it from their kitchen table. So there will be families, teaching staff, community stakeholders, including yourselves. And students and building administration will take part in focus groups that will be moderated to gather data. And then there will be some site visits at each of the schools. We're looking at two days to do walkthroughs and gathering some data. Then along with a lot of the district data, which we certainly have a lot of, so we're putting that together now.
Can I just? So can we just explain to the general public with somebody that might be watching this? I know it's a wonderful term, but strategic planning process. Can you sort of explain a little bit of what's the, you know, is it the system? Why do we just look in, like where we bring in the school system in five years? What it's going to look like at the end of five years? And has the plan to do that? Is that?
You did pretty well.
I don't know about that. It was kind of a nudge.
No. So yes, in fact, we, we reflect all the time and our buildings reflect all the time, but we do like to, to really have a step back and really analyze data. And we're doing it on a five-year process. We, the last time we did this, we came up with five goals, and I think we're hoping to streamline that a little bit this time because there were a lot that we, what we worked on. But like three, maybe four overall arching goals that will have many moving parts underneath them, but they will give us as administration and you all as well, some touch points to say that this is what we're really working on. We're going to gather data along the way, both formative and then summative, to see how we're doing on this. And we'll be able to share that with you and with the community as we go. So in the last one, we had a couple of curriculum instruction and assessment goals. We had a human resource goal and we had a pupil personnel goal. So those are some of the things we're looking into.
So it's really important for people to show up now in this process so they have a voice in the future, especially if you have young kids. You have actual voice in what happens to our school system. The dangerous part is showing up at the end and saying, I didn't know about it. I mean, that's what seems to be happening lately is we put all these things like public notices, message boards, emails, everything, electronic news, everything. And if you ask on social media, where's your favorite pizza? You get a thousand responses within a couple of minutes, right? Am I wrong? But here's something that's really important that people, you're making it really easy so that people can do it from their home or wherever they are, and they could actually have a say in what happens. That's critical.
It is. Thank you.
Now's the time to, to get yourself involved. And, and if you can't make it, maybe share, you know, through an email or some other vehicle to explain sort of what you'd like to see. And that way it all gets, you know, becomes part of the plan.
We're thinking that we've got a pretty wide net that we're throwing out, casting here to be able to get at people's information. But if you all have some ideas also of other avenues or that we can try to get at our. or that we can try to get at our community and our families, we'd love to hear about them.
Can you just off the top of your head, just again, for somebody that might have a first grader or a second grader, wasn't here for the last five years. An example, like we had five goals. Can you just share a couple of them so that people get a general idea? When you say goals, what kind of goals are you looking for? Is it the?
So a, a large one was to research and implement high-quality curriculum materials for ELA, mathematics, and science across the district. And I will say that we have done that. So in our pre-K through 10th grade, we have high-quality materials which include their own assessments that we, will help us to monitor how students are doing individually and as groups and by our demographics. So that was a very large one. That was an example.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry. I just figured I, I better start off with explaining when we tell people strategic plan is for the whole system and a, a general idea of the kinds of things that we can look to.
And again, that's why we're here. We know that these sessions get watched by a lot of people. I'm sure that you know that. We get stopped all the time in the grocery store and people ask us questions about what we've presented. So it's really important that we do provide information for everybody through this avenue. Thank you. The strategic planning piece will take place, the bulk of the work will be November through February. And we're putting together a steering committee to do that work. That will include the superintendent, it will include myself, our special education administrator Laura Van Doren, our English language learner administrator Sheri McKenzie, who you met, I think, a couple of weeks ago. Building administration from all three of the grade spans. Teachers from elementary and secondary. And then business facilities and operations. So Mel will take part in this process as well. So they're going to be doing, if you flip it over, really the bulk of the work. We've planned sessions, so there'll be working sessions. They're going to look at all of the organizational diagnostic data points. And then in between each of their sessions, we're going to charge them with going back to their peers. So the teachers will go back to the, the teachers, administrators will go back to their peers and get some feedback and a back and forth between, between everyone. So that by March, we're planning to have a strategic plan in place that we'll hit the ground running with once we start our new year, July 1st.
For five years?
Yes. And God willing.
In the year 2525.
Yes.
Man is still alive. Well.
Superintendent Desmond, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, but I do believe that they will be interviewing school committee members as well as having them be a part of the focus group. So we just hope you keep an eye out for those invitations. Yes.
You know, this predates some that are here, but one of the things Eileen, I think, was here for is the issue of equity across our schools. But it's an easy thing to say, we need more equity, was a feeling like schools. Then we started to kind of quantify what that meant, right? We started to look towards, what does that mean? And I, I mean, it took a little while to get to, to that point, but I, I would think that for the most part, people would feel, and I'm just curious about that, and maybe that gets asked along the way. Because it's kind of a broad question, but people definitely didn't think our schools were, were equal at the time. And I, I think we made a lot of progress and we did it through a process like this, but we set it as a major goal for the whole system. And we got there, but I, I'd like to think that the people that use the system, the people in the system feel the same way.
We have, the last two years did have our equity working group. I, Eileen and Melissa were part of that. Mrs. Thomas here was part of that as well. We have a vision statement. We gathered a lot of data from students, especially at the middle school and high school level. So they had quite a voice in helping us to craft our equity vision statement. And one of the last things that the group had mentioned when they wrapped last year was we hope this information's going to be heard as part of the strategic planning. And so that's one nice thing. We're not going to be reinventing the wheel with some of the data that we have because the last few years, we've, we've gathered quite a bit of useful data. And I personally was thrilled with the amount of honest reflectiveness that we saw among our students. So get ready, gentlemen, because we're going to ask you to help us.
Yeah, you're thinking of visiting now?
Yes.
Well, I, I want to use as an example of, so people don't think, well, I just go to these things and then, you know, nothing ever happens. It's, you know, it ends up on a shelf somewhere. We really did work at that and worked hard and made sure the funding was behind it. And it was a committee decision at the time and we stuck with it with various superintendents. And I think we got there. I hope the reflection or the feedback that your committee got in the last year or so was a positive one, that people did feel, you know, there were equity, equity in the schools. So.
Yes, certainly was. We received a lot of information. And I will say when we put surveys out, our families do respond, which is nice. They do.
You know, it's just that the world's changing so fast. I feel like everything changes. Like you look out five years, but everything changes so quickly that like.
It's important to ground us because you're right. We, we've been overwhelmed with three or four days of, three, four days of school. And so to have a plan that does give us benchmarks and asks us to reflect occasionally and purposely that otherwise we would get to the five years and say, wait a minute, what happened?
You can realign and adjust as you go. So that's the good part.
Yes.
So I urge everyone to get involved, whatever capacity it is somehow or another. Spend a couple of minutes and we'll just promote this.
Can I just ask, can we talk about it more? I know that what we talk about in the various meetings tie back to the strategic plan. But I think that that as a school committee is where we should spend a lot of our time. So when we're talking about presentations, just having that, hey, this aligns with this in our strategic plan. That's why we're talking about it today. And here's how the progress we're making. I think we just need to be
connected.
Be a little bit more methodical about linking what we're talking about to the strategic plan and reminding us as a committee where we need to focus. So.
Well, that's why we bought the message. Remember, we asked to get the message boards because we figured, well, people waiting in line or they're driving by, it's just another form of communicating. And so again, trying to get more people involved, that might be another avenue to do it. But you're right. If you can link things and make it part of the conversation.
And I know what we, what we talk about is linked to the strategic plan, but just reminding us of, of what the goals are around that and how we're doing towards, I think, just, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
I like it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
CPAC presentation. Don't forget, we need to know when the Christmas holiday breakfast is. All right. I want to make sure it's on the schedule.
Sal just wants to know if he can be an elf again.
Oh, she did? Yeah, 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 yeah. I know. We want to, we want to, we're trying to do strategic planning.
Yeah, there you go.
Get the word out early. Well, everybody's so busy. I'm serious. I'm amazed that everybody in the entire universe is busy. And I don't care what form of communication you have, it's just coming at you in a thousand different directions. So I get it. So that's why we try to get it early. Not, not that you're having trouble with getting people to attend. Okay, the floor is yours.
No introduction needed. I am Laura Van Doren, Special Education Administrator for the District, here with Angela Thomas, the President of our Special Education Parent Advisory Council. We do have some additional board members who have joined us. Angela, introduce them in a minute. We are here to just give you an update on how this group of volunteer parents is supporting our over 1,400 students and families in the district who qualify as either a student with an IEP or a 504.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for giving us the time tonight. One of the things we did do at the end of last year is we revamped our bylaws. So mission statement and purpose and function are front and center here. In case you don't know who we are and what we do, this is just going to give you a little bit of a snapshot. So our main goal is to provide support resources to families in the district that have children that are on, that are a 504. We have very, we have a lot of different purposes and functions. It's kind of hard to narrow down, but you know, we're not only supporting the families, but we are a point of contact for the school. One of our big goals this year is to actually get in front of this committee a lot more. So when you are going over different policies, you know, we can certainly add some, some insight as, you know, making sure that things are conclusive or if you have questions. That's why we're here. So.
Also a great group to see at open houses and various school events. If you see the CPAC, please stop by and say hello.
Yeah, right now we're gearing up for making sure that we're, we've been in all of the, the open houses. So making sure that everybody has all of our information. Over the past couple of years, we've really refined our marketing. So we've created one-pagers to just kind of give people a snapshot as to what we, you know, who we are, what we do, and who points of contact are in each school. So postcards and pictures, lots of those. Just a quick, you know, slide on the CPAC laws. I'm not going to go through everything, but that way you guys see that every district is required to have a CPAC. Whether that district has an active CPAC is to be determined. There are quite a lot of very robust CPACs. I've seen a lot that are not. A lot of us are members of path-to-path groups, which is, there are a lot of Facebook groups. So we actually have the opportunity to share a lot of information with a lot of CPAC processes, which is super helpful. And we get a lot of emails from the Federation. So, you know, it, it's just, it's just a great, another level of community for us. So we, you know, we can get as much information as possible of ourselves as parents. I am happy to report that we've grown significantly. Not only has the district grown, but we have grown as a group. So we've actually taken on more members. Behind me, I've got Shannon, Vice President. Maggie, I'm sorry, Beth is our administrative coordinator in the back. Maggie's our communications coordinator. So we create a communications coordinator, technology coordinator, and a liaison coordinator. Within each school, we have decided that it's really important to have eyes and ears in every single school. So we have liaisons. Think of it as just another level of support. These particular individuals are, they have children that are in those schools. So they're able to report back to us any, you know, whether it be about certain events or maybe some issues that the schools may be having. And then we have everything broken down based on childhood, elementary, middle, and high school. We actually also add a language liaison this year too, because one of the other things that we're trying to do is really bridge that gap with the non-English speaking families. I know as of last year, we had a couple hundred families that were PLO families. And, and also were on either a 504 or 908. So that's a huge portion of the students that we, you know, we want to be able to, you know, support. So.
And just to reiterate, these are all volunteers. We are lucky that the CPAC has grown quite a bit since I first came to sit at this table. So you definitely take a minute to thank.
That's a great job. Unbelievable. I don't know what the others are doing, but you guys, it's amazing what you've done.
It's, it takes a little, it does. As far as community engagement goes, we do a whole bunch of things. As you know, we have created a variety of inclusive events that we hold throughout the year as well as workshops. And then we have, we, we have a library of resources available for families. One of the things that we just started doing, we rolled out the end of the summer, was creating surveys for some of our, our families just as a way to really try to quantify what, what's, what's happening? What are people talking about? What are people having issues with in the community? And then we're able to report to school committee, administration, hey, we got through summer school. This is what the parents are saying. You know, they're, they're loving, you know, having their kid in summer school or they're having issues with, you know, maybe it's a particular school. Maybe it's, you know, something, something else. But it gives us the opportunity every few months to be able to distribute those to families. They're all anonymous. So people don't feel like, oh my gosh, like I can't really, you know, really say how I feel. And then we're able to at least say, hey, this is what's going on. We have a huge presence on social media. We're on Facebook, Instagram, merging into TikTok. We're going to re-hall our website. That's why we brought on our technology coordinator. So we're going to kind of move everything over. So got a lot of stuff going on. Our big goals this year, continue with our events and workshops to support families, more consistent CPAC meetings. So every month, much like a PTOs, where we're actually designating a, a specific Thursday every month to make sure that we have a meeting, whether it's board or a general meeting, something just so we're able to stay on topic. Obviously contributing to school committee meetings or any meetings of school administration. We're here to help. If you guys need anything. And obviously reviewing special education documents. So, and then as I mentioned on the surface. So. Lots. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Ron?
I, I, I was looking over here. It says Massachusetts is only one of seven states that has a law requiring CPAC. So does that mean there's, I'm not trying to be cute, does that mean there's 43 states that don't have this? They're not required. So what happens?
We're in Massachusetts.
Yeah. I, well, it's not, it's not a leading question. It's that, you know, it, it stood up and hit me right in the face. What, what happened to the, where? And how does that translate to you guys?
It doesn't.
Well, I, I'm just asking guys, I, it's, it's as plain as the nose in my face. There's 43 states that are not doing it.
Get them a seat at the table without having to ask for it, right? Like you could be, they list off a bunch of things that they have access to by law, right? They have access to staff. They have access to policies. So they get a seat at the table when other states, they might not have a seat at the table and might not be able to influence how policies or curriculum is implemented that impact special education.
Massachusetts is a little bit more advanced in terms of reaching out to families, population, more aware of things.
I bet you the other six states are probably near the top in terms of public education too.
I think, yeah.
It's also, Ron, just from my own perspective, it's a great support system from within each other beyond the policy and the outreach. It's great to be able to have a conversation with another parent who you know is, can be struggling as well and know it's a group. You can kind of confide in a little bit and have some support from each other.
Good buddy system. I mean, you got, ask busy, ask busy people to do things and it's remarkable what they get done, right? I mean, you're already wearing a million hats.
That's where I was kind of leading to the question. What happens when they, when you get these people come and ask you questions? How do you respond? What, what do you do?
Just have to, you know, get in with all the, and just, you know, hopefully get some good volunteers to help.
I mean, I think, I think a great example is, right, CPAC gets a seat at the table when they're hiring Lauren, right? You know, being able to pick or help choose a candidate that they feel like they can work well with, right? So part of the, my opinion, part of the things that I've observed is that there's a great relationship there between Laura and then the CPAC. And that obviously plays a role in how effective both sides are. So.
Yeah, we're getting.
I understand that. I think it's just a consternation as to why others aren't doing it. I think that's what he's getting.
We're getting better students too. I mean, they're getting more out of it too as the result, as, as a result of the partnership between the school and, and that's the goal, right, is?
Yeah. Do you ever have any one of those? Do you ever have any one of those 43 other states, do, do they ever come here and ask you questions? Do they ever supply you with, with, with? I'm just asking.
But.
I can't just be the only one asking this question.
No, Ronnie, it's a, it's a good question.
It's a terrible question. I don't like good, I hate questions like that.
In special education, we're here to support our students and then CPAC for our families. But the state does have a state level that Angela was referencing, MassPAC and a Federation for Children with Special Needs. So those types of things would go there. They wouldn't make it to the local level with us. So as I was saying, we, we feel extremely lucky that we're not in one of those states or situations because we do have this great partnership and it's excellent for the students and families of Lemonstar.
And to give Angela a pat on the back, you, it is a parent volunteer-based organization. So you have to have parents that have the ability and time-wise and, you know, processing-wise to be able to do it. And, you know, huge credit to Angela for taking this ball and running to get one up and running. I can't even imagine right now.
What's your next event? Are you going to do the Halloween thing again? The safety. Yeah.
Well, the safety event's getting out of control. I mean, I don't even know who's out there from a police standpoint, because every, every department sends like two or three of them.
We had 13, 13 police dogs at the CPAC. So it was just like all the different.
That's cool.
Well, let us know. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, all of you. Keep up, uh, I know you're all busy. We appreciate it.
Yes.
All right, approval in the minutes from August 18th. All right, any questions, comments, or is emissions? If not, all in favor, signify on your manner. We have Policy Subcommittee.
The last.
All right.
So I'd like to make a motion to, this is the second reading of the policies, JJIV, BHE, EHAA, MAC, GVEE.
Is this still three stooges?
IJ, JNDV. Is it IJNDV, KDC, KDCB?
A second.
So some alcohol.
All right.
The second reading.
So the first and the second, any questions or comments about any of them? Yes.
Can, can I, can I just get clarification on what was changed on JJIV between the last time we discussed as a full committee? And the last version that came out? The second paragraph was.
Different sexes can get.
They also incorporated a student may practice or play. Oh, not that one. Sorry, where is it? If a student athlete chooses not to participate, the district will not penalize the athlete for not participating.
Can we, can we separate these outs into both separately?
I could do anything you want. But there's a motion to second. So somebody would have to, that made the motion would have to amend the motion. So you made the motion. Melissa, you made the second. They're correct. Okay, so one of them would have to.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know, we, everybody had, you know, questions or comments in the first reading, so I'm not sure.
We didn't have, I mean, we didn't have a copy after the first reading. We just.
We have the same one in front of you that we had at the first reading.
I mean, I'm willing to, I mean, I'm willing to have a discussion now currently about your feelings on things and maybe that will change my perspective on whether I'm willing to reconsider. But at this point, we've been going over it for so long, I don't think there's going to be a significant change.
That's why, that's why I just want to make sure that I'm clear about my vote. But the same thing that Josh and I brought up the last time regarding coaches and enforcing in our policy, the same thing that we currently already do, which is what we said was happening. We asked for something to be included that would allow coaches to forfeit the game.
So coaches, I think, don't unilaterally forfeit games. They talk to the athletic director around, you know, if the field is got some hazards on it or something like that. And, but they don't uniformly, I don't think, when we had a discussion with the athletic director, decide upon themselves unilaterally. It was, you know, in conjunction with their boss, which is the athletic director.
Well, what happens in the, in the middle of a game though? Like there, things can change, dynamics can change in the middle of the game that could influence. So would they be checking with the athletic director on that?
He said too at that.
They would call the athletic director in the middle of the game?
Yeah.
Or the referees or the umpires or somebody would be. Decisions or the athletic director who is at that, if it's a, you're visiting someplace else, might make a decision.
I know, I've been at football games where it's gotten pretty tense at the end and there, there's been a decision to end the game early. There's, right, right. If they feel there's an unsafe situation, then the refs can also cancel it that are approved by MIAA.
So Greg, I think as long as there's a system in place by which somebody could make an objection and be heard at any time of the game, whether it's before, during, or towards the end, that would be consistent with, I think what Melissa's saying, that already happens now. If that's the case, if there is actually a mechanism that if there was an issue, whatever the issue was, that they, there is a process. I suspect to MIAA, there's a process by which if somebody had an issue, whether it's, you know, spectators getting out of control or whoever it is, it's got to be somebody that could make a determination in the, I suspect that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, I just, I don't want, I don't want there to be an issue for either coaches or players, but beating this to death, just vote and however it works out, it works out. But I'm, I don't, I, I, we can either put it in the minutes and say that I, I was in opposition of JJIV and not all the other ones, but if I have to vote.
Or part of it. You weren't in opposition to all of it, it was just.
I'm in opposition to the, to the policy as written.
Okay.
But I'm not in opposition to the other policies. So if we're just going to do them all at once, that's fine.
Let the record.
Just put it in the minutes.
But I, but I will go along, Greg, same as you. And I think it's been answered. I would like to just double check on that.
Is JJIV the one that you have?
Yes.
So why don't we just pull that one out if that's the will of everyone and then vote the others in group?
Fine. You vote that, want to just vote that one separate and all the other ones together?
You made the motion, so you can.
So I made the motion.
Definitely pull that out. Amend it.
Pull that one out and all the others will vote in block and that one will vote separately.
That's fine.
So let's take the block vote, all in favor, those opposed? And then separate ones, the W, what is it?
JJ.
JJIV.
So I make a motion to approve JJIV, second reading.
All right.
I second that.
And a second, five, Melissa, any other questions or comments? All in favor, those opposed? Okay. But I do think there, it needs to be explained to all, all coaches. If, for whatever reason it is, I don't, it's all sudden, it's lightning out and they don't call the game, it becomes a safety issue, right? So there's somebody that can go to.
Or the umpires or whoever is supposed to.
Whatever the structure is. Okay, thank you. Finance, are we spending any money or did we put a halt to that this?
We have committee meeting today, so we're not spending anything right now.
Nothing.
We're not voting on anything to spend.
Look at you, just put the brakes on all the spending. My goodness.
We had plenty last time though.
You see our students, how we do this around here? Okay, we'll now move on to action items, which we did. Now we're at, wow, we're already at new and old business. Oh, yeah, let's get rid of this printer here.
Motion to approve.
Obsolete Strassay F173D printer. All right. So we're getting rid of it. Anybody interested in a 3D printer, you can call the purchasing department and you have your own 3D printer. Stop making things at home. Hey, what the heck? All right, all in favor, those opposed? Okay, well, it makes big parts, big machines make big parts. All right, anything on the old or new business?
So just in general, a quick update on the field progress.
I'm amazed. Contract has started, what, February, March? It is just a lot of, I mean, it's amazing how much underground work, because it's such a wet site. And they, they did accomplish a lot this summer with the wall. I mean, they tried to get as much done during the summer months, so they're not interfering. They, they're a good contractor. I, I'd hire them in a minute again if we ever had another project, but it's amazing how far they've gotten. But I didn't realize, when they said it, there was, just where that parking lot, if you come in from Grand Street and there's a parking lot there, and I saw them, they, I don't even know how many tons of stone and they had to, you know, got to store that wire somewhere and then slowly release it. That's everywhere. I mean, it's, it's all over the place. So you see a mountain of material out there. I think a lot of that is loom, but they've hauled a lot out of here. And they say, they haul, there's just a steady stream of trucks all summer long, all the material mostly out. So we're hoping by late fall will be a good check. So once they get level and the drainage and all that and the wall is up, then it's just a matter of installing the fields. That's, that's the part that'll go the fastest, yeah. It's just, now I know why in '63, they built fields up there. Now we know. But it's going to really be good, I think, good for, for, you know, what we call gym and, and practice and for all the other reasons that we're doing this for. I think it's. And I think we're making our last payment on it. Same thing.
That's why you like it.
Well, police station, we've already, we've only been here, what, two or three years? We've paid it down 10 years already, you know, just trying to make the payment so that when we get to the Fallbrook School, we're in, you know, better shape to start, right? Putting our financial resources towards that. So, no, it's, they've done a nice job. The side is, and now with the vegetation, there's, there's quite a bit of a buffer between. I was worried like the neighbors were, but there's a pretty big buffer between, you know, the fields and the premises. And our intention wasn't to stop renting it or having music festivals or anything. It was just to provide gym and practice fields for, you know, the 2,000 students that are here, you know?
Just while we're talking about it, and I've been with parents over there this summer, and now that we're not going to have a softball field there, is there an opportunity for us to put an investment into the softball field that the high school is using for lack of having another resource? Yeah.
So we're, we're giving, last year, like $77, close to $80,000 to put into it. And so they're coming up with a, sort of a strategic plan.
Okay.
So that's ongoing to try to help them. So then, I think they're pretty close, right, to, Jen said they're pretty close to having the actual, I don't know what the exact cost out of each thing and a couple of options in there, but yeah, we're starting to invest in it because we use it.
Right. Yeah, thank you.
Oh, yeah. Are you kidding me? Keeping, keeping people busy is the best, especially if it's something I like to do.
Yeah. The only thing, I just, like a broken record, but just to remind people, if you're interested in going to the conference, please let Chris know. I know there's like an early bird special rate, but folks should do that and I encourage people to go.
If they're in January or February, why do I have to do this? Unless you pay extra to be with Ron, because Ron's like a celebrity. Everybody knows Ron. Everyone knows Ron. Is that Ron guy in your school committee? Oh, yeah, Ron. He's a celeb.
I get that. People ask, is Ron coming? Not joking.
He's a, the reason, I think it might, you might be a magnet for, for, for the attendance. The reason attendance goes up is they announce you're going, Ron.
I get asked all the time.
You might want to kickback.
Going to be there.
Certain percentage.
They, they love you because you asked the dirty question.
Well, I hate, I hate, I hate asking dirty questions because it surprises me that I'm the only one that asks the damn thing.
No, other people think it, you say it.
That's right. For the stomping man.
It scares the.
Like Morgan, Morgan, you're for the people.
It scares the pajamas out of me.
All right, motion to adjourn. All in favor? See, we always have to end on a happy note.